I'd like to call this meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Shenear, Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
For the record, Councilmember Guerra and Councilmember, and Mayor Steinberg will be absent this evening, but I do expect Councilmember Carr shortly.
All right, thank you. Will everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the...
Thank you. This meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live on the city's website or viewed later from the archive files. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has three minutes to address the council. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available from the clerk. Please silence your cellphones or other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. And parking validations are also available from the clerk at the front of the room.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd just like to make an announcement at the beginning that those of you who may be here for consent item number two, that was withdrawn from the calendar tonight because of comments we received from the public. The city attorney will be reviewing those comments and hopefully making changes. If it comes back, you'll see it on a future agenda, but at this point, there's no time for it to be re-agendized. With that, Councilmember Jennings, I believe you have a special presentation.
I do, and thank you very much, Vice Mayor. In 2010, Pastor Cash, Donald Johnson, and James Shabazz formed a community day in the Valley High community called the Shabazz Safety Day. That day and that initiative brings health, safety, awareness to the Valley High community and has done so for the past eight years. These gentlemen have spent countless hours and have been a positive voice for change within the community, and it is my pleasure to honor them with a certificate of recognition for their dedication to the Shabazz Safety Day to ensure continued success and demonstration of the importance of bringing a community together. They have been tireless advocates for making change in a community that is needed, and I just want to take a minute to thank them in front of their family and their friends for their countless hours of effort in making a difference in our community. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Pastor Cash and Don Johnson. Please. I'd like to, I'd like to bring you to the podium for a few words of comments, and then I'll bring your certificate down to you and take a picture with you as well.
Pastor Cash.
Good evening, distinguished guests, and to each and every one of you. I'm excited to be here, but more so than that, I'm unable to be able to stand here without the support of my wife, the, my wife, Dr. Cleona Levane Cash. In regard to the Safety Day, Safety Day in itself represent a, an effort put forward so that the community may be able to come together in peace, harmony, and love. It is geared towards all ethnicity, no race left out, so that we can be able to live in peace and harmony within the Valley High community, and not just there throughout Sacramento. So I'm grateful to be here amongst all of you. And for you, Councilman Rick Jennings, I thank you for allowing us to come out and be part of this tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Don Johnson. Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. I really want to thank everybody here at the council and that we've been here today, right? I appreciate that discussion about Safety Day. Of course, my name is Don Johnson, and I'm the project coordinator, right, for Shabazz Safety and Family Fund Day. And my objective is, you know, to bring the community together, just not just community. I want CRC, it's in our community, the high school, of course, the people, MacRae Row, and all like that, want them to come together, right, to be a part of this Shabazz Safety Day, which they are. The community center, because we doing this for our children, right, and that's what James about, right, doing things for the children, make the community safe, right, and make it healthy. And if you know the right place to go to, right, the right contacts, and the children look up to you, and they know who to go to, and not fear you, that's very important, right? And if we have some kind of disaster or anything, hey, we there. You know, it's nice working with people, being around people, you can trust people, when we all working together and make things happen, and we will be stronger in the community. And my whole idea right now, and James Shabazz, right, he say, we want the kids, the children know that we hadn't forgot about them, and we gonna look and take care of them. And if anyone want to check, I got a website, okay, so it's shabazzafidelityday.org. You can go on that site and get you more information about Shabazz, right, what the purpose, the reason, his goal, to make things happen for the community, right? And that's shabazzafidelityday.com. I want to thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, thank you. Give him a round of applause, if you will, please. So the third member that started this, Mr. Shabazz, could not be here with us today because he's gone on to glory, but we have taken a part of the park, the Valley High Park, and a bench in memory of him that will be there forever. And the efforts that you've done with the Safety Day, the Shabazz Safety Day, is also something that we hope will go on forever. So this is an opportunity to present a certificate for your community service and your commitment to making Sacramento a better place to live, work, and play. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Jennings is coming down to do a photo. Do you guys want to step Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Shabazz. All right, we have a very short agenda tonight. We're going to quickly do the consent calendar. Again, item number two was withdrawn. The rest of the consent calendar, I believe we have one speaker, Madam Clerk.
I have two speakers.
Two speakers?
Are you ready for those?
Yep, please.
The first is Robert Copeland, and then David Andre.
Mr. Copeland, and then David Andre. Copeland, sorry, Copeland.
I want to speak on the streetcar. I think it should be polled. We should not have a streetcar when there's more press than needs the RT really needs, like more buses, more light rail, better service.
Thank you.
You're making a mistake. This is why I voted against Measure B last election, because Sacramento City does not know how to spend the money. Uh-uh. I can do a better job of spending money than I think the city council can, or the so-called experts that work for you. Pull, get rid of the streetcar, get better transportation services on existing service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Mr. Andre.
Mr. Andre is speaking on item number five.
All right, Mr. Andre, welcome.
Afternoon, City Council. More and more money is being directed to our city. I'm not seeing it on the streets. I live on the streets. I'm not seeing where the money's going. I've seen a lot of staff, and this item number five frankly worries me because it's a whole lot of money to SHRA, and they don't have a good real track record about helping our people. Can we get some transparency into this to make sure that this money just doesn't go down the tubes and we, there's literally thousands of people on the streets right now. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilmember Carr, a second from Councilmember Harris, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. We have one short public hearing item, I believe, with one public speaker. So let's open the public hearing on item number 22. We'll do public comment in just a second. This should only take two minutes, Faygo. Do we have staff here to make a presentation? I think unless it's necessary, we can keep it brief.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hanson and councilmembers. My name is Sage Millar, Program Specialist with the Department of Utilities. I would like to read into record that the total amount to be levied as special assessments, as indicated in the staff report, has been reduced as a result of payments received since the initial notices. The total delinquency amount to be levied as a special assessment is $3,301,515.73. Exhibit A in the staff report has been revised to reflect these changes, and a copy is on file with the city clerk's office. I respectfully request the vice mayor and council to open and close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
Thank you very much. We have one speaker.
I have one speaker, Mr. McWorthy.
Mr. Worthy.
This is on public comments, right?
This is on the public hearing item. You signed up to speak on number 22. We'll do public comment next.
I thought she said we tabled number two on consent cap.
This is number 22.
Oh, 22, okay, okay. On 22, people, we began to see the situation of finance in this town, for people employed. Now, the county went through from, since it's hiked all the way down, it's utilities. Now you see the repercussion on what you done as a rig of water meters, and you raise the water price on and on. Now you seeing the effect, because what the prices that you have here, you don't have the income. And I wonder how do, it's happened to the apartments. As many apartments we have here, and these people are paying into that, is the tenant, is the landlord paying the bills? I say these things, you've got to take a good look at, what are you doing on delinquency charges? Well, you, you know, you see it come, you see it come here, and you spend time on it, and people don't understand the law. You can have a lien on your property, and it can be on there for years. Only thing this state, this city don't let people buy those liens and charge the people 9% is to pick it up later. They will not take your property for $1,000, believe me, people. They will not. The county will not take your property for $1,000. Help the people with the Constitution, because you misleading the people of the Constitution. Go back to America's brainchild, the Constitution, and let people know, this is your delinquency on these things. Sit down and talk to somebody, and sit down and talk to them, and show a finding statement. Show them what a finding statement is. You don't have to see that tax. Show them a finding statement is what they have going out. They have more going out than they have coming in. And anybody elected official with common sense, they will set it aside and try to help the person get a better income to fix the problem of their debt.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and accept the staff recommendation, Mr. Carr?
I move to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Now we're on to public comment. How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
I have 36 speakers for matters not on the agenda.
All right, we have 36 speakers. We'll try to move through this as fairly as possible.
The first speaker is Kathy Rodriguez, then Tammy Jones, then Gregory Glavonovich.
Ms. Rodriguez, and then Ms. Jones, then Greg Glavonovich. After that is Michael Welcome, Kathy.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kathy Rodriguez. I'm the CEO for the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I've also been asked to speak on behalf of LULAC, the UC Davis Alumni Latino Association, Latino Democrats Club, LDC. And so this is the group that's behind me right here. So first of all, thank you, City Manager Chan and councilmembers, for moving forward on the hiring of the Diversity and Equity Manager. Since the presentation that was given by the city auditor, Jorge Asagera, everyone has been really anticipating this new hire. I was actually fortunate enough to be part of the interview panel that recommended the moving forward of the person that was selected. During that time, I was able to see how critical this role will be, both internally for all of you and the city employees, and also externally for people in the community that have been waiting for this role to be filled. Just so you're aware, the Latino Stakeholders Group has been collaborating with the African American Employees Leadership Council to ensure that they work closely with the new Diversity and Equity Manager to address the critical issues that are affecting our city right now. It's really essential that this role be able to be effective in working with all stakeholders, internal and external. As I said, this was a role that, as we were looking at it, was going to have to be kind of like a superhero role. They're being asked to be looked at both public relations, communications, crisis communications, internally, what's going on, the structure, the processes. There's a lot that's being looked at. And it's really important that everything be able to be done in a transparent manner, that it be able to be action-oriented, that the person is compassionate, they're quick-thinking. It's a huge list that we're asking of this person. So we want to make sure that this person is successful from the very beginning, and so we're asking that just as the job description is stated in the beginning, that it report directly to the city manager, Howard Chan, and that they're, so that they're able to address all the issues that come up and go straight to the top. So we believe that that's really important, and we hope that you take that in mind as we move forward. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Tammy Jones? After Ms. Jones is Mr. Glavonovich, and then Michael Voy.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Jones. I'm a city employee with the police department. However, I'm not here representing PD. I am here representing, with my colleagues, the City of Sacramento's African American Employees Leadership Council, also known as VAAELC. We'd like to take a moment to thank the city council for their leadership in following through and recognizing the need to create the Diversity and Equity Manager position, and for understanding the position should have a direct report to the city manager. We appreciate that the council and city manager are forward-thinking, and that the Diversity and Equity effort is a commitment rather than a program, and that commitment will have the resources and support to implement and maintain an effective effort. We'd like to thank the council and city manager for their unwavering support and for continuing to listen to our concerns, which we began voicing en masse more than two years ago under Mayor Johnson. We would also like to thank council for the regular monitoring of the city's progress in diversity and equity through the audits conducted by the city auditor and presented at the Budget and Audit Committee. And finally, the African American Employees Leadership Council, AAELC, and our Latino constituents with whom we've been meeting, look forward to meeting and collaborating with our new Diversity and Equity Manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Carr.
I'd like to thank the association, the African American leadership in the city, for raising this issue, bringing it to our attention. It was because of your voices that we have a policy that the council will look at this annually. But I still have to caution you that the rate of change cannot exceed the rate of attrition of the city workforce. So we won't, you won't see dramatic changes, but you will see a gradual increase towards equity and diversity in the city workforce. And you will see it for both ethnic groups as well as for, by gender. So every year, when we have this report, the newspapers will be able to come out and say the city is out of balance, and we will be for quite a while. But we will create a glide slope. We'll be on the right path. So thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg, Gregory Glavonovich. Welcome. Turn it the other way. No, flip it, flip it over. I'm sorry. There you go.
A fun kindergarten. Be patient. My talk is on my, high rents. I told a friend once that at the end of time, all landlords will roast in hell, and she said that she was the landlord, and that at the end of time, all the tenants will roast in hell. And I said, well, it looks like at the end of time, all the landlords and tenants will get to know each other. At Loaves and Fishes, where I volunteered, Armando, I met him, and he, I was teaching him English down at Loaves and Fishes. I invited him to my house. He stayed. He washed, I didn't ask him to, but he washed. I taught English in my house. I didn't ask him to, but he washed the dishes, cut the grass, did the yard work without me asking. Then he paid me 100 or 200 a month for rent, and I didn't ask him to. So the next thing that happened was, a friend of mine who was a general contractor on the governor's mansion, lost his house because he couldn't pay the mortgage. There's too much cheap labor coming up from Mexico. I just charged him 100 bucks a month for rent. He did the yard work. He filled my garage driveway, front yard, back patio with his stuff. Best advice is rent to a college kid, because they don't have much baggage to bring to your house. I can't find the third topic. There it is. Now I have a roommate who's smarter than the last guy who was smarter than Tesla. No, he was so smart, he was the reincarnation of Tesla. Now the new roommate is smarter than Tesla. And I charged them 400 instead of 800. They do the yard work, the dishes, the laundry. Time is more important than money, and expression or statement, "time is money" is not true. Are we out of time? Yeah, didn't finish. Charge cheap rent and have them do your dishes, and, which is a waste of time.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Voy. Is Mr. Voy here? Oh, there you are, Mr. Voy.
Yeah, I'm behind the podium. Good evening, councilmembers, Vice Mayor. Case that's coming to, that's going to come to trial, a judge in Yola County orders three men to trial for a couple of missing youths. And I don't know if anybody on the dais has been following this case or not, but Elijah Moore and Enrique Rios were two teenagers. One was 16, one was 17. One's African American, and the other was Hispanic. Now, I don't know which was the 16 and which was the 17-year-old, but the defendants are 27, 21, and there's 20, 21, and then there's an 18-year-old that have been charged with bludgeoning, one of them, these teenagers, to death and shooting the other one. Now, of course, this, the reason I'm bringing this up was, all this happened because the two teenagers stole three ounces of marijuana from the others, and it was a revenge killing. And there's nothing in, that this dais has done in regulation, there are nothing probably that they can do that would prevent this kind of thing. 16 and 17-year-olds can't have marijuana legally, so the only choice they have is to get it, is to steal it. So I want you to think about that, because in my way of thinking, when people start talking about how the pie is divided up and who's eating the pie, the apples for that pie were grown in the Garden of Eden. That's all I've got to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Voy. Our next speaker is Jimmy Dale Wittenberg, then Cynthia Spurling,
I'm Jimmy Dale Wittenberg, from Oregon. I'm a new resident here. Just got registered to vote.
Mr. Wittenberg, can you get a little closer to that microphone? I'm sorry.
I had a stroke. I can't talk very loud.
Just get nice and close.
Three heart attacks, so I'm a little bit down. I'm not as tough as I was when I was 40 years old, and met Howard Jarvis and Paul Gann here in California. They taught me how to lobby, and they told me that all this will pass, no matter how bad it is. There's elections coming up, and people will eventually get rid of you, and we'll see you again. Secondly, I'm, I'm living here on 16th Street, and I can't sleep at night there, because I can see why the governor doesn't live on 16th anymore. In the mansion, the traffic is horrendous. That is the worst I've ever heard in my life. It goes on all night long. On a traffic freeway through the middle of town, all those people have to deal with it, especially the tire people across the street, who have pictures of all the accidents that have occurred there on 16th and E. Essentially, I, I've lobbied for 50 years, so this is not anything new to me. I just was thinking today, you know, if I could take the police in this room and put them out on 16th Street and start doing some traffic control, I would sure appreciate it, because maybe we could cut down on the noise and the accidents out there. But there's, there's half a dozen to protect you guys. I don't think you're all, you really need all these people. Secondly, I had, I've had about 10 relatives here in this area. That's why I'm here, in Woodland, in Roseville, in Folsom, and now in San Francisco, and they protected all you people in the Second World War. One uncle was in Bataan Death March and survived it. Another one was in the Air Force and survived all the airlines. Another one was in the, the military base.
Mr. Wittenberg, your time has expired. Can you please wrap up?
Yeah, essentially, just do something for the veterans, would you? We, we put them at homes up in Portland. We don't just disband with them.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you coming.
You don't care, do you? That's, that's okay.
Thank you.
But do something about the homeless people. It's the worst I've ever seen in the United States.
Mr. Wittenberg, thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Spurling. After Ms. Spurling is Jeffrey Tardagia, then Emreet Vance.
Today, I'm talking to you about transportation for the handicapped and proseñores. Jointly, the city works with the county providing paratransit. There is no such thing as a monthly pass. You pay 400, $147 for a 60 pass. That gives you 30 round trip rides. I'm sorry, I'm an active senior, and I'm an active disabled, so it's going to cost me 100 to 150 dollars more to be able to get where I want to go. Now, if I were handicapped, if I could ride regional transport, you'd charge me 55 dollars. If you want me to ride that, yeah, I can do it. Last time I rode it... Last time I rode it, I fell. So I'm stuck with you overcharging me in this way. So you're not doing anything to help seniors. You're charging them massive amounts of money just to get transportation. I'm going to the bank tomorrow to pull out 150 to 200 dollars more so I can afford riding it. I'm tired of this. I'm tired of you taking advantage of seniors and the disabled in this way. Thank you.
Your comments, Mr. Tardagia.
Yes, I am hoping you hear me. Um, I'm Jeff Tardagia and for the record, please, I thought I heard Mindy say that it was three minutes, not two minutes, when you announced through there. But also the other question I have for you, Steve, is also, did you change the agenda? Because I look at the last page, which I'm putting on right here, that says public comment is before the public hearing. Now you also, I believe, did that. I didn't hear a change of agenda. But six months I have been coming here and your disability stall in City Hall has had a, shall we say, what have we got to call it? The seat covers have been like this. I finally, since nobody has noticed it, drew it to the attention of your people over there. So I'm hoping that by the end of the week, when I next come back here, it will be fixed in, so we say, from this manner to, you know, this manner. Now, as far as the matter here tonight, I am here because I also reported to, should we say, RT's board that your bicycle path on J Street has ignored the 21st, shall we stop? The other thing that I will offer to Mr. Howard Chang is, is we still have the problem at H Street where the light rail, it has not been adequately mannered change so that you have the cars that keep coming right up there because they're racing up with the construction that's going on between 7th and 8th. And it proposes and suspends, shall we say, light rail, and I think you will find there are serious reports about that, of still being blocked. So please, I hope that somewhere you have a better means, and I note to you, if you go to Roseville, you see on there, they have on their website, "Transportation." So you may possibly see what are the problems, and I note for this city.
Tardagia, your time is up.
We're out of time is the two minutes. Anyway, I hope you'd make a change as far as transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Tardagia. Our next speaker is Amreet Vance. Amreet Vance. Carly Brannon. Carly, are you here? I don't see Carly or Ms., or, uh, Amreet. Kian Ward. After Kian is Jennifer Martins, then Dennis Hewlett.
Hi. So I'm here today to talk to you about the SACPD. So this flame represents the adominable human spirit, and this is what the SACPD wants to do to it. Anytime they see anybody living outside of what they believe are their stuffy rules of what being is, they start to get out of themselves and project their views of how you should be onto you. So I believe we need to make serious overhauls in the Sacramento Police Department based upon not only racist policies that are still being carried out by District Attorney Schubert, but also just general policies of, uh, just how you guys police the streets and how you guys try and make people feel as if their home, AKA all of the street, is not belonging to them, when really, these streets are our streets and you guys are supposed to serve us, instead of us having to feel like we're subservient to some sort of higher power that can judge us. Because nobody can judge us except for ourselves. So you guys need to accept that and start to come to terms with the fact that you cannot judge other people and tell other people how to live their lives. Yeah, that's pretty much all I got to say. Peace.
Thank you for your comments. Jennifer Martins. After Jennifer is Dennis Hewlett, then Brazi Liberty.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Martins and I'm a child advocate with the CASA.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little?
I'm a court-appointed special advocate with CASA, but I also currently work with the Children's Receiving Home. And I'm here today because I'm a residential counselor to youth that, if you don't know, have been recently removed from their homes and have an extensive amount of trauma to deal with. So we're kind of the first hands-on people that go in and interact with the youth every day. And so the reason why I've got some serious concerns around what's going on within this environment is because the youth that I specifically work with, which are teenage girls, we have watched them come in and seen them be recruited for sexual exploitation. And so what I'm here to ask for is some attention given to the training that we might be able to receive as residential counselors to try to interfere with the recruitment process so that as we see these teenage girls come to the facility, we can actually dialogue with them before we have to watch them go out to what they call the blade and come back every night under the influence and with more sexual trauma. So what we really need at the Children's Receiving Home is adequate levels of funding and training and engagement with law enforcement to actually address this issue instead of pretending like it's not there and it doesn't matter. And really what we would like to see is more city involvement with oversight into what CRH is doing, the Children's Receiving Home is doing in terms of hiring, because we are short-staffed and the kids absolutely know that and take advantage of that as an opportunity for violence. And our training processes really need to, to reflect the level of behaviors that we're seeing and the danger that these youth are exposed to. And we need to be more empowered to advocate for the youth because they do have a right to safety. And right now, because of the staffing environment, we are not able to protect that right. So I'm asking for the city to help us dialogue about how we can.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, but we have your contact information, ma'am, and I'll ask the city manager staff to follow up with you to see how we can better connect to the Children's Receiving Home and your work. Dennis Hewlett. After Mr. Hewlett is Brazi Liberty, then T. Whitney.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Hewlett and I'm, uh, resident of District 8. And I was here at a city council meeting in the aftermath of the shooting of Stephon Clark. And the Chief Hahn was here fielding a lot of questions, and they were proposing a bunch of questions for him that he was going to come back to the council and, uh, give answers to. And I try to pay attention to these things and maybe you guys put out the information or maybe he's answered these questions, but I haven't heard anything. And so, um, I would ask that you do a better job, if you have done it, of making sure people know. If not, if they haven't, if he hasn't responded to those questions, I'd like to know why not. I also, um, I, I understand that the officers who shot Stephon Clark are back on the job with their guns in, you know, out on the streets. And I just wonder if that's really the message that we want to be giving our communities is that you can make a mistake. You can call it a mistake or whatever you want to call it, you can debate it, but at the very least, it was a mistake to shoot a person that's unarmed. And if you're going to just put them back on the streets while you're investigating, it's, think of the message that that is sending and how people feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Brazi Liberty, after Brazi's.
Can I request my three minutes?
Uh, no, sir. Not until your call. The council rules are clearly two minutes. That has been our consistent.
And I greatly apologize if I misspoke.
Oh, you're fired!
Did I hear wrong?
Yeah, it was a misstatement.
Oh, okay, so I heard wrong. Uh-huh.
Welcome.
Black Power. So I just wanted, I just got a couple of things to say. The, the city council is in violation of the Brown Act and, uh, more specifically, Mayor Steinberg with his interjections and disruptions and outbursts that he be having and his rudeness, it's all, um, in violation of the Brown Act. This is, uh, this meeting is set up for the people to come and express themselves to the people we have unfortunately voted in, unfortunately, all you guys, because y'all don't represent us fully. And, uh, what else I want to say? One minute, 20 seconds. Howard Chang, I seen you waving, waving and smiling at the baby that was up here with the black family and, uh, but it's not genuine because you don't care if racist police pigs shoot them dead and you don't care if they go on, uh, if they go on paid vacation for murdering black babies. So don't ever wave at a black baby again like you care about him or his brothers, sisters, mothers, and fathers. Check yourself. And also, police, the SACPD in Sacramento, they're, uh, what's it called? Gestapo? Yeah, you know, racist police force, murderers, brutalizers. Who was the, we had a boy get ran over, uh, off his bike in, uh, what, two nights ago? They was chasing him for, what, minor infraction and they ran him over. He fractured his back. We got Captain Leong. Captain Leong, you work for white supremacy. We got T. Hayden, badge number 627. He's racist. We got Sergeant Singwall back there, the bald guy back there in the corner. He's racist and he's been, he's been heard calling other white people race traitors for supporting Black Lives Matter. This guy back there in the corner, Sergeant Singwall. Who else? We got Oil Huni over here.
Your time is up.
The big, the big buff racist guy who likes to beat people.
Mr. Liberty, your final comments, please.
I've got Officer Figaro who beat Nancy Kane.
Mr. Liberty, your time is up. Your time is up. T. Whitney is our next speaker. T. Whitney is our next speaker. Uh, your time is up, Mr..
I'm aware you said that, but I'm not done speaking because I'm.
Mr. Liberty, you've been warned. You've been, you've been warned. You've been warned once. You've, you've been warned twice, Mr. Liberty. At this point, I would ask you to leave the council chambers. Sergeants.
I have to talk. It's about my housing.
Sergeants.
Okay, so it doesn't have to do with this other. No, I don't know.
Sergeants, please escort Mr. Liberty out of the chamber. You've been warned and I've, because you are over your time. You've been warned three times, Mr. Liberty.
We're just following orders. He's the same.
Mr. Liberty, thank you. T. Whitney, you're our next speaker. After.
I'd like to give Brazi my two minutes.
No, that is not allowed under our rules. After Ms. Whitney is Ben DeBerry, and then Elizabeth McDaniel. Ms. Whitney?
Hey, I'm sitting down, Hanson.
I'm sorry, sir. Because you broke our rules, we're asking you to leave.
That's ridiculous, Steve. Let him stay! 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 Let him stay!
Ms. Whitney, your time is running.
Let him stay, Steve! This is ridiculous! Come on, say you can stay, Steve!
Everybody. Everybody, all right. If, if the crowd will not behave, we will adjourn the meeting. We have many people who wish to still speak.
Everybody in here is telling you to let him stay!
If, if, adjourn the meeting and we have lost our quorum, uh, we will adjourn the meeting.
Your decorum always matters more than the voice of the people!
I'd like to.
We're done here? We're done? Your decorum sucks! It's hypocritical when you got Gestapo killing black people in the streets with no accountability, no transparency.
They are here to listen. Everybody gets their fair allotment of time.
Where's your decorum when they shot Stephon Clark? How are your own laws? Where's the decorum when Brandon Smith didn't get an ambulance, he got a damn paddy wagon?
Ms. Whitney, we have many people who still want to speak.
I have 40 seconds left!
If we cannot resolve this, if we cannot resolve this, we will adjourn the council meeting. The audience, the audience has been warned. This is the last, this is the last warning. We'll adjourn the council meeting if we cannot get order in the chamber. Ms. Whitney, I'm willing to restart your clock if you would like to make comments. Otherwise, we will call our next speaker. All right. Madam Clerk, please restart the clock. All right, please give your comments.
I want to limit my comments to the fact that you just restarted the time after I caused a significant disruption and broke all the rules in your chamber. And you would not have done that if I was black! You would not have done that if I was brown! Your racist-ass policies!
Ms. Whitney, Ms.
You gave me the benefit of the doubt because I look like you! Your hypocrisy sucks shit, Steve!
Ms. Whitney, we are trying to continue the council meeting so that the other speakers can speak.
Point of order, point of order, Vice Mayor.
Member Ashby.
Yes, Vice Mayor, all substantive business is done for the day. I move that we close this meeting and continue those who have a public comment speaker remaining.
There will be order in the chamber.
Those who have a public speaker slip remaining submitted with the clerk could come back next week and be added to our speaker's comment. Now untenable to continue the meeting in this chamber.
Uh, Councilmember, all right, let's, let's try to resolve this. Councilmember Ashby, I think in the interest of the people who are here, if we can get order back in the chamber, we will continue. Our next speaker is Ben DeBerry, and then Elizabeth McDaniel. If Mr. DeBerry is here, then he can come up to speak. After Mr. DeBerry is Elizabeth McDaniel. Welcome, Mr. DeBerry.
Thank you.
We need to move out of the way. Get them sucked out of my face. Can y'all listen because this is.
All right.
I can't see.
Please, let's continue listening to the people who've shown up.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ben DeBerry and I'm a homeowner, homeowner in District 4, Land Park. I'm relatively new resident to Sacramento. My family and I moved here from Chicago last July. We've quickly fallen in love with the city and its people. As a native Chicagoan, I'm intimately familiar with the strong executive branch and governing body. I'm equally familiar with the deep legacy and tradition of active civic engagement and a vital, thriving democracy. During the last year, I've been dismayed to observe an effort by this body, specifically Mayor Steinberg, to suppress public comment and discourse. I see this as part of a broader national trend toward more authoritarian and less democratic modes of governing. It is a trend that will and must be directly confronted by all of us. In light of that, I've been asked by Black Lives Matter Sacramento and other community organizations and individual stakeholders to submit the following cease and desist order for prior and ongoing Brown Act violations. Um, oh, did we lose the assistant clerk? Okay, um, I'll deliver, we've got copies for each council member as well as the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeBerry. Elizabeth McDaniel. After Ms. McDaniel is Mac Worthy, and then Robert Copeland. Welcome, Ms. McDaniel.
Uh-oh. Um, wait a minute, hold it, don't stop my minute. I'm trying to get my picture right.
Okay.
Ooh, what's going on with the camera? It can't, it's not doing that.
Do you want us to zoom in?
Well, with that, that's a picture of my couch, okay? Okay, so, um, I'll be shedding light, um, good evening. Like I told you before, Jesus is coming, Jesus is illuminary, I'm the illuminator, and the deeds are dark and they are naughty. So I'll be shedding light, uh, this evening on the swap-out, AKA switch-out. There's a whole lot of folks all up and down California and in other states that know about this. That occurs down through the valley from Modesto to Sacramento and many other cities throughout California. A swap-out is a part of an organized crime ring, and it's when property management companies, maintenance crews, and managers access a person's apartment in an unauthorized manner and they take their new property items and switch it out for old look-alike items. It's organized crime and the love of money is the root of all this evil. Point notomus apartments, reliant property management. Point Notomas Apartments, reliant property management, Sherry House should just be straight-out fired. Um, this happened to me, I sent a memorandum about two years, almost two years ago now, to each council member, to the board of supervisors, I even sent a copy to the White House. That's just how much I wanted to put this in the light versus folks calling you crazy. You know, it's quite dismissive to call someone crazy. Specifically, any of you can just take it upon yourself, ask anyone, a maintenance team from anywhere, ask them about the swap-out, switch-out, okay? The, when you buy your new property, your new furniture, they go in and flip it out for old stuff. How would, how would they feel if they came in their house and laid on one of their furniture and ants were crawling on them? And this picture here, it's an indentation in my couch. For about two years, my time was split between another residence, I wasn't even there. Everything in my apartment was brand-new. It is now old. I invite you to come. You can come to the Point Notomas apartment. In addition to that, you can come see the one eye in the maintenance shed with the eight lashes representing the eight districts.
Ms. McDaniel, your time is up.
Okay, well, God bless you all, you know, I just, um, I pray that, we all pray, you know, don't pledge allegiance to that flag, get on your knees and talk to Jesus, that's an object.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Uh, next up is Mac Worthy, then Robert Copeland, then LB. Mac Worthy?
Good afternoon, fam. We hypothetically, the civil rights of many people have been violated here. By, you know, the Brown Act. Somebody called me when I was in Virginia, talked to me about it, but I said, you know, nothing I can do about it. Also, were we misleading our young black people? If you would listen to me, we would get the case in court. Now, when the mayor asks the city council to bar the young man from here, you cannot buy a mayor, bar him out of here. There has to be a restraining order. And if a restraining order filed against him, I will testify in court where the violation should come in. Now, here are the people that want to see the police tape, this is the tape you want. I will sit down with you. We can subpoena every police in here to testify to the violations here in the Brown Act. But, you guys are brilliant policemen here, but you are parzing their man against the police department. You are. You are the problem, not these guys here. We have some people here that we can sit on our oath because the state of California classified them as an expert witness. Take these people how to fight. But no, you won't have the authority to say, "What, do this and do that." You cannot continue. You lost the respect here by not knowing what you're doing and refusing to listen to follow the Constitution. The city council cannot be parzoned by Ashley. Robbie Ward is parzoning Banea, the South Sacramento woman, on city council, the same thing here. The city council sit back, the city attendants sit back down here where she's supposed to be sitting, instead of you playing law. See, we got three people here want to play law, you cannot.
Mr. Worthy, your time is up.
Uh, just, just a minute. Get back, get back, get back on step, because people listen to me, and I will volunteer to any of these people and the police department and show you where we can file the case now.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland, then LB, and after LB is Joyce Johnston.
I testify in front of State Assembly, State Senate, County Board of Supervisors, RT, SH, randomy, a couple other agencies, and this is the worst council that I've seen yet! I mean, you guys see the council members talking, whispering to each other, interrupting in public for no reason. Keep your act together. I think this should be an investigation of violating the Brown Act yourselves. If you want respect, you give respect, and you don't do it! And we've got, we've got a lot, uh, we got a hot, increasing homeless population, increasing rent, cops murdering black people, and they getting away with it! And you're worried about public decorum? Are you kidding me? I wish Mayor Steinberg was here! And the other council, missing council members, because I got a couple things to say to them. I mean, I predict that the Cleveland Browns will win the Super Bowl, LA Kings will win the championship, Sac State will win over Alabama football, and the Sac State ladies' basketball team will beat UConn before you do your job and solve all the problems!
Our next speaker is, our, our next speaker is LB. After LB is Joyce Johnston, and then Jevé Spooner.
Are you ready for me?
Yes.
You may beat us down with your batons, slam us to the ground, pepper spray us, run us over with your vehicles, kill us, but we're still going to win. Throwing tantrums, anger outbursts is a problem, and the mayor isn't here to hear it because he's scared. You were made famous, Mayor, lashing out at people, telling them to hell with you. But do you think we are the problem? We are angry, but at injustice. We are still waiting for accountability from ruthless murderers and death caused by your failure to render medical help. Yet, we are not the one throwing tantrums. Then, there's this problem with violating the First Amendment, a human right, but I think you and everyone here already know that there's a proverbial pie in your face, that you lost a lawsuit because it's a violation of human right, the freedom of speech. You selectively disrespect, and your dangerous contempt for people is marred in the denial of justice. Consistently violating the Brown Act, suppressing the activist's voice at meetings, and labeling us as disruptive. If your right, if our rights are being violated, wouldn't it be a moral obligation to confront injustice? It's not a coincidence that activists, including myself, are being attacked and physically abused by the police, whether or not we complied. It's as if you want us to be silenced or dead. So you are not, you're a little sensitive to being called terrorists, murderers, or Gestapos.
LB, your time is up. May we please have your final comments?
Thou doth protest too much. You are the enemy of the people. People are living under this terror because the city and the police think they are judge, jury, and executioners.
LB, your time is up. Our next speaker is Joyce Johnston.
Why are the murderers free to work and not prosecuted?
LB, your time is up. You've been warned once.
If you're doing everything in accordance to your laws, to your laws.
Now, twice. LB, if you do not stop, I'll ask that you be removed from the chamber. Sergeants.
Did you forget that you are -
Sergeants, I have warned you. Our next speaker is Joyce Johnston, then Jevé Spooner. Ms. Johnston?
Why is Councilmember Ashby on her phone again? Is she listening to the button?
Please do not shout out from the audience, Ms. Johnston, it's your time to speak.
Thank you. Um, I think I am bringing you the easiest problem of your evening. This again, these are drawings of the lovely rental studio that would be finished and available for rent right now if city planning would follow the law. Allowing and encouraging homeowners to build more on their own property at their own expense should be the lowest-hanging fruit for addressing the housing shortage. It's free for the city, it doesn't cost you anything. It's my land, I'm going to oversee and pay for the construction, and it'll produce a housing unit, a lovely one. You need to look at what city planning is doing to prevent this kind of construction. However much city planning might prefer to quote "vet" my ADU project and collect a large fee for doing it with a public deviation hearing, that's exactly what the state statute does not allow the city to require. Government Code Section 65852.2 allows only ministerial approval processes for ADUs and prohibits any discretionary processes, provisions, or requirements. I realize city planning may resent the state's intrusion into the traditional exercise of local authority, but the state law and purposes are very clear, to support and encourage development of ADUs as an important resource in addressing the critical housing shortage. Why is city planning inviting or inventing excuses to say no? And why are you all allowing them to do that while we have people sleeping next to the building, under every freeway overpass, and in every park in our city? You need to say yes.
Ms. Johnston, I'd like you to talk to Assistant City Manager Fran Halbachin. I know that we've attempted to work with you on this, but hopefully that our Assistant City Manager can help you. Thank you. Jevé Spooner, you're next. Thank you, Ms. Johnston. After Jevé is Koa Spooner, and then Keon Bliss.
Good afternoon to you guys. You guys truly don't know how we feel unless it happens to you. Just imagine how we actually feel. Before you guys say anything, close your eyes and imagine if someone, you guys, say your wives, or your daughters, or your sons got shot and killed in your backyard. There's no difference between the two people who killed my little brothers, Robin Surjimodi, and the two holes who killed my best friend, my brother, my best dank classmate ever, Stephon Clark. There would be justice, or there would be hell on earth, because like the saying goes, an eye for an eye, a tooth for a tooth, what goes around comes back around always. And put that on the screen real quick. Just like the saying goes, whatever happens, happens. And to Terrence Motocross, jail, whipping it, let me find out the gym I'll go to, forget my MMA skills, I'm a family man, I'm a friend, fuck you two sons of bitches!
Our next speaker is Koa Spooner, then Keon Bliss, and then Elizabeth, and then Elizabeth Is Koa here? No. Keon Bliss, is Keon here? Is Keon? Yep. After Keon is Elizabeth Kim, then Casey Jennet.
That's Keon, by the way.
I'm sorry, Keon. Turn it over.
What? Turn it over? Oh, yeah. Y'all have had quite the day without Steinberg even in the building, right? How's the texting going, Ashby? Eyes up? No?
Mr. Bliss, please address the council as a whole.
It's true. It is public commentary. My comments were going to be directed at Mayor Steinberg, but seeing as how he's not here, I'm going to have to direct it to all of you, considering that Angela Gashby is a perfect example of how you all don't even follow your own decorum. You don't care about the actual decorum, you only care about order that makes you feel comfortable. You care about your comfort more than your own constituents, how they feel, the struggles that they're dealing with. If you actually cared, you wouldn't even bother proposing rules to ban people from city council meeting. You wouldn't be changing up the decorum rules to prevent us from swearing, exercising our First Amendment right to say fuck. Who cares? You all seemingly care all this much about decorum, but nothing about the people who are literally dying on your streets. You don't even care to learn or understand why we would compare law enforcement personnel to the fucking Gestapo, to Nazis. It's emblematic of the system of white supremacy as it exists, the system of oppression which this country has literally been founded upon. How every single thing that we enjoy, these fucking nice-ass buildings, the massive amounts of wealth in this country, literally generated on the backs of enslaved human beings who were forcibly kidnapped from their original homes. And we still do it here even today, we just call it by a different name. But not that y'all care.
Mr. Bliss, your time is up.
It's pretty obvious in your actions, because actions speak much louder than your words ever will.
Please give us your final thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Elizabeth Kim, Casey Jennet, and then Caitlin.
Good afternoon. Sorry.
Ms. Kim?
My name is Elizabeth Kim, I'm the president of National Lawyers Guild Sacramento Chapter. We're the oldest integrated bar association in the United States. I'm here today because, in light of the fact that we have a really bad relationship with your elected officials and the public, this is your constituency, and I'm here because I'm very concerned about things that are coming up in the news, when you have proposed rules proposing that we kick out your members because they're exercising their First Amendment. It's a human right for them to express themselves, and I understand that local politics is not easy. I understand that these meetings are not pleasant, sometimes we're impolite, but it comes from a place of pain. People are hurting, and just because it's not in the news now, that does not mean this pain goes away. And so, week after week, people come here to express that pain because they have a right to do so. And I don't see anyone here reaching out to any of the liaison organizations to try to bridge this gap and restore the trust that has been taken away between yourselves and the public. So I'm here as a liaison, offering myself to be somehow a tool so that we can bridge this gap. Instead of trying to shut us out or kick us out, there's ways for us to get over this gap and bridge this gap together and work together. I don't see any of that happening. So, I, I want to thank you for scrapping that from the agenda today, and I hope that we don't see that in the future. I understand that these are not helpful to discourse if we don't have this conversation in a, in a manner that's constructive, but let's try to have that conversation in a space where people can feel safe and, and able to express themselves without feeling like they have to be kicked out.
Yes!
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Uh, next up is Casey Jennet, then Caitlin Supetcheak-Bellnap. I hope I said that right, and then Adam, Adam Jordan Wells after that.
So, I want to start by saying that I think we should stop using the word Gestapo, because I think it's disrespectful to the Gestapo, at least they had the courage to do it from secret! Next, I'd like to talk about the, the restricted forms of speech in the US, because we do have this thing called the First Amendment, which supersedes even the Brown Act that we've been talking about today. And I'd like to talk about clear and present danger, which was the initial form of speech that wasn't protected. Eyes up here. And then, uh, they changed it in 1969 after Brandon Berg versus Ohio, because they wanted to overturn the conviction of a Ku Klux Klan member, so they changed it so that clear and present danger wasn't the standard anymore, but rather, they were trying to not criminalize mere advocacy of danger, of like, words that might cause danger, right? And then I also want to talk about obscenity, because there's a very, very clear, very, very clear decision on that as well. Because what you guys are ruling as obscenity is actually not in any way, because the actual standard set out by the Supreme Court states that the work, taken as a whole, meaning all two minutes, or three if we're to believe Ms. Cuppy, uh, would be, uh, would have to, as a whole, they have to lack serious political, literary, artistic, or scientific value. So as a part of the two minutes being used as part of the public comment, they are serious. What's behind me? Is there anything cool, Mr. Hanson? I'm not sure, but you're looking back there. So, fighting words, they can be defined by the courts as speech that tends to incite a breach of the peace, like say, uh, Howard Chan's nod to the police that gets all of them to come stand up here and intimidate people from talking. That's not going to work anymore, guys! I also think we might want to drug test this guy over here, he looks like he might have a little rage issue. Uh, so, not only that, but like, the, these, and then, and the rest of, of the, of the First Amendment are there to protect us, and they're to enable us to say things to you guys when you guys aren't doing things. And I, I appreciate, Howard Chan, that you especially appreciate your right to remain silent, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we're here, every word that comes out of our mouth, be it fuck, shit, or anything else, is absolutely of political value for this discourse. And if the people in uniform here today have any courage at all, they will stop, they will stop being agents of state coercion to silence people expressing their First Amendment rights. I know there's a breath in your chest, and yours, and yours, and a heart that beats, and every -
Your time is up, it's, please give us your final thought. Mr. Jennet.
We're the same thing, we're all people.
Our next speaker is Casey Bellnap. Our next speaker is Casey, or Caitlin Bellnap. After Caitlin is Adam Jordan Wells, and then Sue Colom. We have about 10 more speakers.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Supotsey-Bellnap, I live in District 4, I'm a homeowner in Land Park. This is my first Sacramento City Council meeting where I've spoken, but I've watched a number of them, and I've been really disappointed at the crisis in leadership that I think we have in this city. I think the representative from the National Lawyers Guild really spoke to the issue well. People are in pain. They're suffering. There is fear for their safety. This situation is life and death for the folks who are coming here every week to tell you how important it is, and the city has almost done nothing to reach out to take care of the situation. Instead, you're sitting on your phone? I was an elected official for 12 years. I ran meetings for four. I'm sorry, but that is beyond rude. It is beyond rude. Also, you shouldn't interrupt me. You all have all of the power in this meeting. You have unlimited time to speak. You can cut my mic. I have two minutes. We each get two. Don't argue with me. I have run meetings myself.
Pause your time. Our council rules require you to address the presiding officer, not any individual council member.
Do your council... Can I have some more time? Because this isn't fair. Do your council rules actually allow you all to sit on your phones and scroll through whatever's going on your phone? I can't imagine that that is true. And the point is that the level of disrespect that's being shown, it's too bad that Mayor Steinberg isn't here, because most of what I wanted to say actually had to do with him, but I had no idea that other council members were just sort of paying no attention when people are speaking. I can't believe that the tragedy that rocked this city hasn't caused any of you to want to maybe step outside of what this decorum idea is just outrageous, that you're using it against people who are beside themselves, because they're asking you to help take care of the people of this community, and you're not doing your jobs. You're not doing your jobs. If there are any of you who actually feel any concern for what's going on, then I would ask you to please take the woman from the National Lawyers Guild up on her offer to help be a bridge, and others who are making that offer, reach out to Black Lives Matter, and actually give them more than two minutes to explain what's going on in this community. There's no reason why we have to do our meetings like this. We actually could be sitting down and talking at the table.
Please have your final comment.
Yeah, you took a bunch of my time arguing with me.
Adam, Adam Jordan-Wills. After Mr. Wills, Sue Colom, then Faygo.
Greetings. My name's Adam Jordan-Wills. I'm part of Anti-Police Terror Project, also a member of Black Lives Matter. So, just be real quick. I know as a black person and a homeowner in Sacramento that I am seven times more likely to be pulled over for drugs when white folks my same age are four times more likely to have it, right? So, when I know, when I know I'm going to get pulled over, and I have a black son back there, and a police officer sees a big black, 250-pound black man, it doesn't matter that I'm a chef, it doesn't matter that I'm a professional, it doesn't matter that I've never even touched a gun, that they're scared, and that's why they killed that young man. They killed Stephon because they were afraid. If you heard the recording, the fear was so deep in their voice, they shook. Their voice shook. They were scared of a phone. So if police are so scared of me as a black man, my safety is at risk. Anytime these police officers are around me with pistols, I'm scared for my life. Why am I scared for my life? Because they've proven that they don't care about my life or any other life of a black person in this country. And check it out. When we talk about police violence and police terrorism, people love to bring up black-on-black crime. That's a misnomer. Every ethnicity preys upon that ethnicity, right? 96% of Asians criminally prey upon other Asians. 86% of white people, 92% of black people. It doesn't matter. The predominant factor of crime is not ethnicity, it is being poor. You hear this? Being poor. Work on educating people to give people options, to pay counselors, mentors, therapists, schools, so you educate these people to give them other places and other things to do besides crime, instead of standing here while this fascist...
Mr. Wills, your time is up.
I'm sorry. My bad. My bad.
Your time is up. May we have your final comment?
10 seconds, I'll wrap it up. She seemed to be a fascist to me, because when people are trying to speak, she rather silenced the public's voice. That's fascism. That's why people are being compared to Gestapo. That's why y'all being compared to Nazis. And you don't have to be white to implement a...
Mr. Wills, thank you for your comments. Next up is Sue Colom, then Faygo, then Armando Flores.
Hello. All right. So I find that I have the same feelings everybody else do. The mayor isn't here. In fact, the mayor scared me like a man did one day when he put a gun to my head. And he looked at the man in front of me that was Keon? Keon. And he pointed and said, "You need to get out of here." And I thought he was pointing at me. And Keon said, "Me?" And he said, "Yeah, you." And he stood up and he said, "Fuck you." And I just want people to know the word "fuck" is in a word. It's fornication under the command of the king. Like this. That's the truth. So, it's an acronym for the King's Law. This is the King's Law, and I stand here to say to you, you're not my king, nor are we jesters in this. I say that we have a right to say what we want, and for you to fear the words that come out of our mouths is ridiculous. So, 33 years ago, my daughter's father was murdered in cold blood by the police, and then they married each other. And I see you move your eyebrow because you have no clue. I ran for city council against you. That's why I want change, Steve Hanson. I got 25% of the votes, and even though I might not be considered council members, as you say, I think these guys might think I would be. So I feel that you should not silence what we have to say. Some of us are dealing with horrible situations in our lives. Have you ever had a gun put to your head? I have. Have you ever had anybody in your family murdered? I have.
Ms. Colom, your time is up.
I know my time is up. So is your time. Council member. Fucking over!
Mr. Clark?
So, it seems like you guys really don't value the Constitution much. I mean, just back in November, you passed a new ordinance against panhandling. It was unconstitutional, and I had to go and challenge you guys in court, which I'm sure you guys weren't very happy with that decision. I mean, that's at least twice that you've lost to a homeless guy. Then, we come and see you once again, try to silence the free speech of other individuals who speak out, and are extremely frustrated at the fact that you never seem to care what the public has to say unless it's praising you. Whenever there's something critical, or whenever you're disrespected the public, gets them upset enough to speak out, you want to run away like some cowards. Maybe we should start showing some backbone and actually respect people's First Amendment rights, instead of continually violate the Constitution, continually violate the Brown Act. And further, if you don't like people calling the police Gestapos, maybe you should get them to stop acting like it. Maybe you should stop passing policies that force them into Gestapo-like situations, like your anti camping ordinance, and other ordinances that disproportionately target people in poverty and people of color. How about we start actually doing something about the racial profiling that we're seeing in our streets to this day? How about we actually start doing something to correct the issues, rather than catering to corporate interests at every turn? How about we actually listen to the public? Let me say that again, because I know you guys are hard of hearing at times. Listen to the public! And you don't want outbursts? Once again, listen to the public! Something that seems to bother you guys unless I've got $100,000 in my pocket or something, you know? How about we actually listen? This one was just for Steinberg, who decided to be too scared to show up.
All right. I will, I'm going to stop the comments for a moment, because we need to talk about decorum in the chamber. If the audience will keep, if the audience keeps interrupting the speakers, and Mackenzie, I'm going to warn you. Mackenzie?
Can you stop interrupting the people, too?
If we cannot regain...
Can I get my two minutes?
If we cannot maintain order in the chamber, we will adjourn the meeting. Please let the people who signed up...
You put my two minutes up, please.
Please let the people who signed up to speak have their turn to speak, and we'll get through everyone.
Okay, stop. It's my two minutes. Can you please stop and pay attention to me? Is my two minutes now?
Two minutes will start as soon as the chamber is quiet.
As soon as you're quiet?
All right, Madam Clerk, please start Mr. Flores's two minutes.
Okay, first off, I want to talk to you, all of you, about decorum. This guy is not paying attention. He don't care. You are eating and drinking. We're not supposed to bring any food in here? How do you get to do that? You're on the phone and thinking about your babies, probably, or who knows what you're thinking about, and you want to stop the meeting because you don't like what's going on? There's two handicapped people here trying to get to the podium to speak. This guy just sits there. This guy just sits there. They can't get up here. Nobody helps them. What about serving the people and protecting the people? Those people could hurt themselves. You don't care? Furthermore, I want to talk to you about the homeless situation. When are we going to fix that problem? And by the way, I went to the, I think it was Jeff Harris and Jay Schneider that promoted the new shelter on the north area, and they put it on a video that was really pretty, and it looked really nice. It's a piece of shit! I just saw it. I was inside. Where did that money go? That's what I want to know. And where did the new money that came in is going? Where's your transparency? Why don't you guys go and look at it? Why don't you go and sit there for a minute and see what you can do? Maybe you can feed somebody or clothe somebody. You guys think it's just really nice to just throw some money here and there to people that you like, that you want to benefit, because they're benefiting you, and you just throw a bunch of people that the police picked out and chose to be, that chose someone to go into the shelter, not the people that really need to be in there? And those people that you have in there, what are you doing for them? You're going to throw them out in October, but in between, you're doing nothing for them. They're just in a shell, in a jailhouse. That's what you're doing for them.
Mr. Flores, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, check it out.
Next up is Pastor Gainsborough, Trina Allen, and then Cam Franklin. After that, we have four speakers. Pastor Gainsborough, you're up. And then Trina Allen.
It's good to be back here. I'm missing the mayor being here, and we're all entitled to a vacation. The city attorney was given the cease and desist orders to be distributed to the council. She put them under her notebook where they're still there. When I mentioned it to the city attorney 15 minutes ago when she walked by, she refused to even answer my question. Why don't you distribute those to the council?
Pastor Gainsborough, please address me and the council as a whole.
Okay. The city attorney should have passed those papers out to the city council. I haven't been here in a couple months, but the tenor and the spiritual atmosphere in the council...
All right. Please let Pastor Gainsborough speak.
I suspect that it's my time to be silent as well, and to use my time without being interrupted. Now, when I read in a paper about a bicyclist being hit by a Sacramento police car, being chased by it, and then being knocked off it, and then injuring his back, and that not even being brought up by the council tonight, saying this is a deplorable, regrettable situation. But then, when I think about the murder of Stephon Clark, and the fact that the issue of minimal force, minimal violent enforcement, which has gone to the state legislature, is not being addressed directly by the council. You are being called as city fathers to be leaders. You must not let the police department cow you into what is righteousness. Joseph Mann was run down like a wild animal by police almost two years ago. You need to stand up. Leadership is not entitled. It is defined by action.
Next up is Trina Allen, then Cam Franklin, Burke Clemmons, and Lorraine Brown. After Lorraine, there are two more speakers. Welcome, Ms. Allen.
I hope this sign makes you uncomfortable, but I hope the actions of your police goddamn terrify you. If you don't want them to be called Gestapo, then demand that they don't behave that way. Hitting people with a service vehicle used as a weapon is not a tactic. It is torture. Your officers chased a child on a bike and rammed him with a militarized automobile, throwing him in the air and breaking his back. That is sick. But not as sick as your complicity. This is not the first time nor the last. It is your status quo and your legacy of state violence, terrorism, and black death. You can't fix it. To be honest, this diocese wouldn't if it could, right? That's why we call for abolition. But you could reduce the harm and muzzle your brutes with basic accountability, and yet you refuse to. Howard Chan, you are a sham. You should be firing these officers. You should be saying, "It's not okay, not on my time." You all should be addressing these issues. If I had found out that a child in my district, where are you, Warren, was run over by a cop car with intention? Intention? And it was not the first thing, was not the first thing on that agenda? I would be outraged, right? Right? And we need to talk about decorum. There's a basic hierarchy of needs in this world. When people come at you with, "My child was killed in my backyard." When people come at you with, "They ran my child over with a car." Think about that, Ashby, right? What would that feel like, Hanson? Huh? When people come at you with that, they don't come at you with pleasantries. And if they did, you wouldn't fucking listen, and you know that. Do your job. Do it right. Do it better. You can't fix this, but you can absolutely reduce the harm. You can reduce the harm. You can stand up, and you can show up. You can show up, and you can say, "No, not here, not now, not ever, not today, not in Sacramento." But you haven't. You sat up there. You ignore. You get mad at our little actions. But you don't need to. Just do something.
After Ms. Allen, we next have Cam Franklin. Cam Franklin. After Cam is Burke Clemmons, Lorraine Brown.
Council members, I have written down what I want to say to avoid any unplanned or spontaneous expression of emotion. I have avoided using profanity or emotionally charged words because I want you to hear me, but more importantly, I want to clarify that it is not virtue but privilege that allows me to do so. I have the option to speak calmly about Sacramento's housing issues, because I personally am not, yet, facing the immediate threat of eviction or becoming unhoused. I have the option to wait my turn and not shout out about injustice, because my brother or uncle or son was not killed by the police for carrying a cellphone. As a woman and because of less obvious qualities, I'm not privileged in every way, but the areas in which I do have privilege are what allow me to follow whatever rules of decorum the council decides to enact. Likewise, whatever your background, sitting in a position of authority in this council chamber gives you privilege and power over the members of the public that come here to address their concerns. Unlike both you and I, those members of the community who are most likely to need an open forum in which to express their need for change are the least likely to have the privilege of approaching it with cold detachment. Rather, the same personal firsthand lived experience that manifests as outrage and outbursts is also the source of the very information that is most needed by any decision-making body in order to enact positive change. Even aside from adopting more restrictive policies, the existing decorum protocol regarding how members of the community may express themselves not only restricts the free speech of those who most need a voice in our community, but also shuts off the best source of insight into what methods of change will be most effective. Policies undertaken without that knowledge inevitably become ineffective and wasteful, which is why I urge you to value constructive criticism in any form it is expressed, over the false ego boost of using the gavel.
Thank you for your comments. Burke Clemmons, Lorraine Brown, and then Patrick Bankert. Welcome, Mr. Clemmons.
I hate that I have to preface what I came here for. I'm 73 years old.
Mr. Clemmons, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but please address the council, not the audience.
I, born and raised in Chicago, I want to thank Alan Warren for what he has been doing, seemingly to, he seems like a man of compassion, wanting to help those... seemingly to, he has a man, seems like a man of compassion, wanting to help those. Jay, thanks so much for helping our church after it got broke into and get that resolved. Rick, you're doing an outstanding job for your community, and I really appreciate you as a person. I can't hate all white people. I can't hate all cops. I understand, I feel the, the hurt and the pain. Uh, I came here because we have a rash of, of thefts in my neighborhood, my truck tailgate was stolen, my car was broken into, they took my package off of my, uh, off my porch. I had to put five hundred dollars into that system, another two hundred into the system. There's a quiet group of neighbors out there that are living in fear behind fences and cameras, and I wanted to help with a solution, Carr, I'm in your district, I voted for you. I want to say that let's get together, man, let's have a day in the park with the police and the news, and the TVs, and, and organize, and get the, the kids involved, so that the parents can listen to something that we can get a neighborhood watch, and, and sit down and get them signed up, because so many people from different ethnicities and different times in the history of this country have been afraid to get out and say what's happening in the community, so it gets taken over with people that are out there to steal. There's one guy who's roaming the neighborhood right now, three o'clock in the morning when they stole his car, now he's looking to find those young kids, and that's gonna be somebody that's gonna do some harm, somebody's gonna get hurt. So, I have ideas on how we can help, out-of-the-box types of ideas, how we can help those that are homeless. People out there know me as Mr. B. I feed homeless people, I give them money, they know me. They come to my door when they're hurt, when their boyfriends are beating them up. Just last week, he's beating her up, she knows me, and I help her, then he gets mad at me, and then he targets my house. I want to help, I want to help. My goodness.
Clemmons. Mr. B, your time is up. Um, I, I would invite Mr. Carr.
Yes, thank you, I'd be happy to meet with you if you call the office.
I'm sorry.
I'd be happy to meet with you if you call the office. Uh, there is a, um, Summer Night Lights, Thursday, Friday, Saturday at the Meadowview Center, there's also one on Center Parkway. We have, uh, four or five park day schedule.
With all due respect, with all due respect, I want to be specific in our neighborhood. I don't want to get turned off. I've called your office before, I didn't get anywhere. I want to be specific, I want to help. I want, I want the people right there in the neighborhood.
I'll meet with you after the, I'll meet with you after the meeting.
That's what I want to do. Alright, thank you so much.
Mr. Clemmons, I already, I also asked, um, our assistant city manager to talk to you, Mr. Clemmons. Assistant city manager Chris Conlon, uh, who oversees-
I'm, I'm, I'm part of here.
I'm sorry. I also asked our assistant city manager, Chris Conlon, who oversees the police department to talk with you as well, he's in the back.
And, and I want to, I want to say thanks to Sergeant Stripes, Sergeant Stripes, she, she called me back, we got a plan going.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, next up is Lorraine Brown, and then after Lorraine-
There's some people that want to spread fear, war of the worlds, Orson Welles, they want to spread fear and terrorism, and they're looking to, um, promote identity politics. And that's not how we work. All are equal under the law, according to USA law. But we have a immigration settlement here that has decided our laws have no effect. And that started with Clinton and Bush. And I personally, as a psychologist, am appalled. I am so outraged, as everyone else is, that, that this kind of gang activity that disrupts, that disrupts, by the way, cellphones are a weapon right now.
Alright.
And they're, and they're more scary, and I'm a witness.
Let's, 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 excuse me, the-
That's right, we have freedom of speech. Yeah, I'm a USA citizen, and maybe you're not, I don't know.
Please, let her finish her comments, please let her finish her comments.
I'm trying. Would you stop the clock?
Miss Brown, alright, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Alright.
That's right, that's why I'm being attacked. That's right.
Sergeant, please-
Stop the clock.
We're gonna adjourn this meeting, we're gonna adjourn the meeting. The, the two left to speak. Sergeants, please escort Mr. Janet to the chamber.
Okay, racist, racist, racist.
Miss Brown, we invite you back next week.
Shut the fuck down, baby.
This is not appropriate behavior in the chamber to threaten other people.
Yeah, this is weird. Unbelievable. What? Unbelievable.
Uh, the council is, council stands adjourned. The city council stands adjourned. Miss Brown, come back next week.
By, by the way, Steve, my phone is not working, and they're-